In the Muskogee County School District, creating "we" is more than words. It's our commitment. Together, educators, staff, parents, and our community unite with one purpose: to lift every student higher, to inspire every learner to succeed, and to build a stronger, united community where our shared commitment shapes tomorrow. For students, creating "we" means learning in an environment where they feel supported, connected, and inspired to reach their fullest potential.
Creating "we" means we're all in this together, helping each other succeed.
For staff, creating "we" means teamwork, collaboration, and knowing every effort helps shape the future of our students.
Here in the Muskogee County School District, when we say "we", it means every educator is united for student success.
For our Board of Education, creating "we" means ensuring every decision reflects our collective commitment to excellence, equity, and opportunity for all.
Creating "we" means we get to inspire and equip all students to achieve unlimited potential.
For Superintendent Dr. David Lewis, creating "we" means leading with a vision that unites students, staff, families, and the community as one. It's about fostering a culture where MCSD shines as a beacon of educational excellence, where everyone is known, valued, and inspired.
As a parent, creating "we" means my child's success is everyone's success.
We are the Muskogee County School District. Creating "we" means celebrating the spirit of unity, where every voice matters and every action makes a difference.
Good evening and welcome to our, I'll make sure I have the right month, September work session. And yes, I have never done this before in all the years that I have been Vice Chair, so y'all are in for a treat tonight. So just bear with me, Mark's already said a prayer for me, so we're gonna be good. I will say that Ms. Hughley-Green, Ms. Schla, and Dr. Chambers are all at the COSPA, the National School Board Association, event in DC regarding federal relations, right? Yes, they're meeting with some of our legislators. So that's where they are, so we are a little light on numbers tonight. So I would like to say welcome. I see with us Alan Harkness with the library, Ms. Mary Ann Rickner with the museum. If we have any other school administrators, wave, smile, stand up. Yes, and we have the crew from Jordan that we're gonna speak here from in a minute. So now that I have welcomed everyone, I think I turn it over to y'all next. I'm telling y'all, it's gonna be tricky.
There we go. Okay, cleared the land, okay. Just wanted to let everybody know, we will be doing a presentation on attendance. That'll be taking place next month, or I'm sorry, next week on Monday evening. We want to wait till all the board members are here to hear the presentation on that particularly. So we'll be covering that next Monday, so we will move forward with Jordan. We're gonna move them up on the agenda. And hit that, next.
Good to go, sir.
You're good.
Perfect, perfect. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much. Really honored to be here this evening. You know, this is a, to a certain extent, it's a mandatory thing we do, but I think it's also something we enjoy doing for you all. We, as your only college and career academy, are required to do an annual report to you to show you exactly what the College and Career Academy here in Muskogee County is accomplishing. And so that is what tonight's presentation is all about. I know that some of you in this room have seen this before, so I apologize. You're gonna see a little bit of what you've seen previously, but that's okay. Before I begin, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues. We have right here behind me Ms. Kier Muborn. She is our Vice Principal of Technology and Human Services. We also have our other Assistant Principal, Mr. Keith Hampel, who is with Industrial and Engineering Systems, not featured tonight. And we'll be writing him up later, is Mr. Kenneth Josie, who's over at our Freshman Academy. And then, of course, our fearless leader, Mr. Ryan Hudson, who serves as our principal. I also would like to draw attention, we do have two of our board members who are here with us this evening, Mr. Colin Martin with AT&amp;T, and the wonderful Dr. Asante Hiltz, who is at Valley Healthcare. I mean, yeah, okay, sure, yeah, you're wonderful, you know, I like you. But she's hard to compare to, you know, not to mention her daughter's one of our seniors. She's an amazing young lady. So as we get started, in short order, you know, we're gonna get into some numbers, but I'll tell you, just in simple terms, 24-25 was a great year at Jordan High School. Really great year, we did some awesome things. And I was watching the video and listening to the song there as we talk about creating "we". And I'll just say this, that the accomplishments at Jordan High School are the accomplishments not of a single individual, but of a collective. It's you as board members, it's of this amazing cabinet who is so supportive of the work that we do, it's of folks like Ms. Christine Hull, who's always answering silly questions for me, and Dr. Thomas back there, who makes sure that those CTAE programs always have what they need. And really, just across the board, the support we get here at the district, we're very much grateful for. So I'll say that, and say that what you're gonna see, the success that we're building here is a collective work and one that we look forward to continuing to build as the years go on. So with that said, we'll move right into our presentation. Is this a... It helps when it's turned on, right? So, okay, there we go, fantastic, beautiful. Well, this is a picture of our graduating class of 2025. Amazing group of students here. In fact, I'd be remiss, forgive me, I left off an upcoming graduate of the class of 2026 who has joined us this evening, Mr. Derek Trochet, who is our future CEO. He's our Battalion Commander for JROTC. He's got impeccable taste, he's also just a great young man. We're really proud of Derek, looking forward to seeing him walk across this stage that you see in front of you here in just a couple of months. So I felt it was very important to put up this picture this year. A year ago, when I gave this presentation, this woman that you see in front of you was at home watching it. And she was a very special lady to me, and I know to many of you as well. Ms. Judy Thomas is a proud, proud red jacket, probably the proudest I've ever met. Love this lady, and of course, she went to be with the Lord this last year. But we know she's looking down on us, and hopefully, we're making her proud. She's just a great woman, and I've actually put up this picture here of her graduating photograph. I stumbled on it by accident just a couple of months ago, thought it was a great picture, so I just wanted to put it up here, draw attention to the fact that, again, this school, it wouldn't be where it is today if it weren't for the folks who are here, but also if it weren't for folks like Ms. Judy Thomas, who is a champion of the work that we do. And I know it's due to her and to many, many others who have helped to make Jordan a great place. So I just want to bring that to mind, and just be mindful of Ms. Judy, and know that, you know, wherever she is, know that we're proud of her and hope we're making her proud too. So we, of course, at Jordan have a mission. I like to put this at the beginning of every single presentation. If you walk into Mr. Hudson's office or my office, you will see this proudly displayed on our walls. You'll see it on the walls of our halls. Our mission at Jordan is not a saying, it is not just an idea. It's really who we are, it's our ethos, it's what we believe, that we really do want to be a place where teachers have the opportunity to teach, students have the opportunity to learn, where parents have every opportunity to participate. And ultimately, and this is the big thing, you know, tomorrow, we've got a Workforce Development Summit. I know I'll see many of you there tomorrow. But that we're the community, ultimately entrust that the students we produce truly are present, prepared, and professional, and able to go on to do great things here in the Muskogee County and Chattahoochee Valley area. I do have a little brief message here from myself. Don't bother reading that, it's not terribly important, it's just a lot of filler. What I do want to point out, though, is this photograph that you see here. We had the pleasure this year of bringing some of our ninth graders up to the state Capitol. This would not have been done without the amazing support that we received from our local delegation. Vice Chairman McRae, you mentioned the fact that some of the school board members are up in DC right now. You know, I can't help but think that we have amazing support, not just locally, but the state, and I'm sure at the federal level as well. And so I'm very, very grateful to Ms. Hughley, Ms. Rice, to Teddy Reese, to the entire delegation for being so generous to bring our kids up there, take good care of them, and show them how their government works. So very, very grateful for that, want to make sure that they get their flowers. Here's a little snapshot for you about our class of 2025. We graduated 189 students. Of those students, they earned an additional 24 Technical College certificates, so that's in addition to their diploma. This chart that you see right here is a little breakdown. You know, we, of course, talk about making sure that every student is, when they graduate, enlisted, enrolled, or employed somewhere. So this is a nice little breakdown. What it doesn't show you, unfortunately, and I'll remedy this in the future, is the number of students who are both enrolled and employed at the same time. So you're kind of seeing them in singular buckets, but I would imagine that you're gonna have a fair amount of overlap as well. So this is something we're gonna be tracking as time goes on. Our Region Chief, Mr. Baker, tasked me with something last year about the importance of making sure that we're seeing and collecting the data to track where these students go when they finish at Jordan, that we see the fruit of our labor, so to speak. So this is something that we're gonna be continuing to collect. And we're actually gonna be doing annual follow-up with our graduating classes, taking small sample sizes and just kind of keeping an eye on them, collecting their stories, and seeing just what kind of long-term impact we've had for them at the school. Of course, you know, being a wall-to-wall academy, unlike a lot of academies here in the state of Georgia, our students have opportunity to offer or to participate in a whole host of athletic activities. And I really love this photograph. In fact, I have to ask, I have to ask my team, do we know who got this photograph of Beatrice? Do we have any idea? I don't know if this was just a spur-of-the-moment thing, but this young lady that you see right here is one of our seniors. She's a class of 2026 with Mr. Trochet, her name is Beatrice Suomi. I'm trying to put the proper accent on there in this part, because this is an amazing story. This photo was taken last year. Ms. Suomi won the state wrestling championship for her weight class, so she is the best in the state. And just a few months after this was taken, Beatrice, who is a native of Liberia, which is along the Gold Coast of Africa. Beatrice, I was seeing her in our dual enrollment office, she's also a dual enrollment student. And I was just talking to her, you know, how life was going, that sort of thing. And she said, "Oh, Mr. Willby, just last week, I got my naturalization. I did my oath and became a US citizen." So she was so, so proud to be not just a citizen of Liberia, but the United States as well. And I just love that story. I love to see people winning and to see this young lady who's not just winning there on the map, but in life as well, as she's becoming a proud American, moving forward, and I know is gonna be doing great things as life goes on. So just wanted to point out Beatrice there, she's a sweet young lady. We, of course, had our Page One nominees last year. Nobody ended up bringing home the gold for us on this end, but that's not really what Page One's about, is it? It's about opportunity, it's about giving kids a chance to interact with professionals and to highlight the things that they've done through their years. I was a Page One nominee when I was at Jordan, I know others in this room were as well. And so just really, really proud of each of these students and the opportunity they had last year. And we're grateful for them and for what they were able to do. So now, let's get into a couple of numbers here. You know, a statistic that I know Dr. Thomas is very proud of, and she should be, is the fact that every CTAE pathway completer, and this is not just a Jordan, this is in Muskogee County, if I'm not mistaken. Dr. Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong, but they have a 100% graduation rate. So when we think about the importance of career technical agricultural education, I think that number right there speaks volumes, that the students who go and complete their pathway are pretty well guaranteed to graduate. Just last year, we, of course, saw 315 of our students complete their CTAE pathways. Thankfully, with the way that we are structured at Jordan, they have the opportunity to actually complete multiple pathways during their time there. So we're very, very proud, as you can see, we're showing that upward trajectory, which is ultimately where you want to see this number continue to go. We want to see that continue to increase. We're also proud to say that of our 24-25 EOPA, that stands for End of Pathway Assessments, for those who don't know, that's the industry credentialed exam that students take as they complete a pathway. We saw a completion rate of 60% on those, which is pretty darn good when you consider what some of those exams are. I've taken a look at quite a few of them, and I'll tell you with 100% confidence, there's no way I could pass some of them, because they are, they are pretty, pretty rigorous. So proud of that number, very, very proud of that number, and sure, it's gonna go up as time goes on. Work-based learning, when I talk about a college and career academy, I say that there's four pillars to it, first being academics, the second being CTAE, the third being dual enrollment, and the fourth is work-based learning. If you know me, I did work-based learning when I was in school. I'm a very, very big proponent of this program. I believe in it, we see the results of it every single day. So last year, we actually had 80 of our students who were engaged in work-based learning. They earned over 200 credit hours. You can see they worked over 47,000 hours, and of course, earned nearly half a million dollars in wages. I really, really like this number, because if you know there's one thing about high school students, they don't save money, they spend it. So you know, of that $500,000, a fair amount of that comes back in this little thing called sales tax revenue. So, you know, pretty happy to see that, you know, they're giving back to the community, whether they know it or not. But we're very proud of our work-based learning program. You'll hear more about that tomorrow if you're at the Workforce Development Summit at the Cunningham Center. Next up, of course, we had our dual enrollment class for last year. We had a total of 115 students who were there in dual enrollment in some capacity, either at Columbus Tech or at CSU. And this year, we've proudly added Georgia Military College to our retinue of dual enrollment providers. They earn 260 credit hours, their completion rate, so this is their chance of actually passing that class. I mean, it's great that you take it, but you need to pass it, right? You need to actually earn that credit. Was 92.5%, very, very satisfied with those numbers. Again, there's 24 certificates that were earned, and I'd like to draw your attention here to this bottom number. Of those students who managed to pass those classes, 80% of them did so with a 3.0 or higher GPA. And so they're not just passing, they're not just squeaking by, they're doing well, they're excelling, and doing great things going forward, getting ready for that next step after high school. So we set for ourselves a couple of goals last year along each one of these four pillars. I shared those with you last year, and I'm sure that every one of you remembers them with great detail and zeal and enthusiasm. But I'm proud to say that we passed through each one of those goals. We actually managed to meet or exceed each one of them that we set for ourselves. And we were pretty pleased with how things turned out in that respect, so much so that we decided to set some other goals for our 25-26 roadmap. One of the things that our academic teachers have been doing is they've been participating in a little something called RISE, which is offering some new strategies to these teachers on how to continue to engage students and increase academic performance. For our CTAE students and our teachers, we are looking more and more at what we call micro credentials. These are smaller certificates that come from third-party suppliers, particularly industries, where an individual has an opportunity to earn a credential in something like a very specific piece of equipment or a very specific task, instead of completing all the way through an entire semester or more of coursework. So practical example that I use is something like, if you're familiar with Snap-on in the automotive industry, they're a major supplier of automotive equipment. Snap-on offers certifications just for their diagnostic equipment, and just for other pieces of equipment they offer. So those are small credentials that we can get kids that can easily be incorporated in with the standards from the state, that are just, you know, additional toppings onto that sundae that they're building when they graduate. So helping to build that resume and get them prepared for life after high school. From a work-based learning perspective, one thing we are looking to do is expand our offering of healthcare internships. I'm gonna look back here at Dr. Hiltz, who's been valuable in doing that here in the district. We've appreciated her partnership at Valley Healthcare. We're looking at other ways to offer that, because as I'm sure many of you know, people are gonna continue to get sick, and that means that people are gonna continue to need healthcare providers. We don't see that industry slowing down at all. Proud to say that a number of high schools here in Muskogee County offer some sort of healthcare pathway. And so we just want to offer more work-based opportunities for those sort of students, particularly considering how challenging that field is. If you can get a student involved in it in a work perspective as early as possible, so that they don't go down the road and put in years and years and thousands of dollars worth of money and effort into maybe a degree field that they really don't want to be a part of, because at the end of the day, they like the idea of a doctor's salary, but they don't like the idea of blood and bile and all the icky things that doctors have to deal with. If we can get that on the front end, I think it's gonna be better for everyone. Finally, one of the things that we're continuing to focus on from a dual enrollment perspective, we do want to increase our post-secondary credentials and certifications. I'm proud to say that I feel we're gonna be able to do that this year through our partnership through Columbus Tech, as we did last year. Add a number of teachers who are actually, in effect, adjunct faculty for Columbus Tech, so we'll be able to offer some of our CTAE dual enrollment courses on campus in our facilities. So a couple of things I'd like to just explore with you briefly, if I may, just things that are kind of coming down the pipe at your college and career academy. One of the things that we are working more diligently on is making sure that as we move our students through, as they're matriculating through the ninth grade, that we are getting them properly placed in the pathways where they need to be. You know, when you talk to a ninth-grade student, they might be really, really gung-ho on doing something until they actually get in there and do it, and then find out they don't have an aptitude for it or an interest in it like they thought they did. So we're doing some front-end things. I've been working with Dr. Thomas, Dr. Smith, and team to get things like our U-Scienc results, implement that in such a way that we're directing those kids where they need to go. In fact, this year, we're going to implement the Practice ASVAP for all of our ninth graders, so that we can identify some of their career aptitudes and see how those align with our pathway selections. So one thing that we're doing, focusing heavily on that. I mentioned to you as well, the micro credentials that we're pitching out there. We've got a list of those that we're working with in each pathway and through each pathway course to try and to try and get those in students' hands. And then finally, something that Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Josie and I saw when we went to another college and career academy in Kentucky last year is a senior portfolio project that we saw for their students, basically a proof of learning. And so that was where we actually got to witness a senior come in, explain to us how their educational experience, ninth through 12th grade, prepared them for graduation and what their intention was when they graduated, were they going to be enlisted, enrolled, or employed? If so, had they taken the steps to make that successful? So that is something that we're bringing in this year as well. We're starting it off for our ninth and 10th graders with the idea being that that'll be a long-term project that we continue to cultivate for all the students who come through Jordan, so that when they walk across that stage in May, they really have a detailed, specific plan for how they're going to get where they need to go. So these are three things that we've got coming down the road for us. We have some additional goals that we looked at last year, some things that we were trying to improve upon. Proud to say that we accomplished the vast majority of those. We did have a little bit of a struggle there with our discipline referrals, didn't quite reach that at the level we had wanted, as well as our graduation rate fell a little bit. We've identified kind of the things that led to those, and we're putting in some place different strategies to try and address them as we go into 25, 26. We are still waiting to find out exactly what our CCRPI growth is. We, of course, haven't gotten those numbers, but feel confident with the team gathering around last year, taking a look at the metrics to determine your CCRPI and the algorithm around that, that we're going to see the 3% to 6% growth that we were tasked for by our region chief, Mr. Baker. So, so move into 25 and 26. Again, we're trying to just continue to make that slow incremental growth in all of these areas, whether it's related to attendance, whether it's related to dual enrollment. We want to continue to kind of raise that bar just slowly, just slowly, bring that bar further and further up, where at the end of the day, we're continuing to make this school great, we're continuing to do awesome things, and to set the standard for what college and career academies should be doing here in the state of Georgia. So as we work through the 25, 26 year, I'm looking forward to collecting all this information, retaining that for it, for you, sharing it with you next year. I believe this is, yep, that was the end of my slide. So as always, I am happy to entertain any and all questions that you all may have.
Oh, not a question. I was going to ask, are there any questions from the board members? No questions. Thank you, sir. Very good presentation.
I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate you on being one five under 40 for the Chattahoochee. Make sure it, Columbus in the valley, Columbus in the valley.
I appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you, thank you. They had already had four, and they were looking for a fifth, so they just kind of called.
Don't do that. You're doing a great job, and I really appreciate the transparency on the goals and what y'all hit, what you need to work on, and that was very helpful. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Ms. McRae. We're going to continue to try and, like I said, raise the bar and do more each and every year. So thank you for the support we get from you and from the board members and for everything that you guys do to make sure that we're able to be successful at Jordan. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd also like to come to say that you actually present very well.
Well, I have to apologize, Ms. Buckner. Y'all have seen me a lot in the last couple of months, so hopefully you won't have to see my face again for a little bit. So, thank you.
I just want to thank Mr. Willby and all the staff and team members, the board members. We have voluntary board members who meet on a regular basis to help guide the direction of Jordan as well. And just wanted to put a word out to everybody, we're coming up in the season of looking at enrollment in our magnet programs, of which Jordan is one of those. And really wanted to encourage people to really consider Jordan because there's a lot of great learning going on there and practical skills that our community needs. We talk about jobs that will always be around, and the jobs that they have are not going to be impacted by AI. Those are jobs we're all going to need going forward, and they're great-paying jobs, and we're trying to add even more as the opportunity arises and we can develop more of those work-based learning experiences with our community and business partners. So just want to just put a plug in for everybody, please consider Jordan for, not only for their learning, but also for a great career and future ahead and contributing back to our community. So, thank you.
Well done, you sir. Thank you all.
Okay, I'm going to double back for a moment and say that we did not have anybody on the public agenda. We did not skip it per se, but we didn't have anybody signed up for today. And now, Ms. Buckner has graciously agreed to help do the personnel committee today as well.
Thank you, Mrs. McRae. McCray? I was saying, Matt Gray, McCray. Okay, thank you. First, first thing, I want to commend Mrs. Green because Lori said that she has not done this before, so that means that Mrs. Green has been at every board meeting for the last, whatever, 20-something years, well, the time, your duration on the board, so.
And I will actually, I should have said too, she's on the phone right now, so she's still here in spirit. She just can't leave it from there.
And Lori, also, I want to say you're doing a great job, just running very smoothly. All right, so for the personnel, the personnel committee, we have our standard vacancies and hires that we have every year. So are there any questions or comments on, on any of that? You've seen the reports. But I would like, since it's at the beginning of the year, I just want to ask you some, something really quick. I saw that we had like 55 bus drivers, and since it's at the beginning of the year, are we having any kind of problems? Are we running okay? We have 55 vacancies, you know, and I'm just saying, are we still, are we okay with the buses? Since it's at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. We continue to have a significant bus driver vacancy. However, we are meeting many of our goals. We're still, we're at the beginning of the school year, so we're starting to drop down bus stops that aren't being utilized, that some people signed up and aren't utilizing them, and making our routes more efficient. And so we're going through the normal process that we go through at the beginning of the school year, so we'll continue to see efficiencies, but we have a very smooth start to the school year, much smoother than we've seen in the past couple of years. So we're doing much better.
Thank you.
That does not mean that we're meeting all of our goals right now. I don't want to oversell it, but we're doing much better than we have years past.
One other thing, there's a whole list of inactive employees. What does that mean? Where are they? You know, they gave the... What does inactive mean? Then, are they working? Yeah, I didn't know what that, are they working somewhere?
Inactive means they're, they're separated. So they're no, they no longer work. They either resigned, they retired, they left on it, so softer terms. Instead of saying, I think the terminology was terminated or something like that before. Now it's more softer terminology.
Oh, is, is, is it only termination or is it retirement?
It's everything.
It's everything, okay.
Yeah, and they all fall, and some, actually online it even says resign, but they all did not resign.
Yeah, I saw that list. I said, dang, where are all these people inactive? Where are they? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If there are no more questions, Ms. McRae, back to you.
I'll turn it to Ms. Tillery for the policy committee.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. We have one item, the revised policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use. Based on continual review of board policies, the Muskogee County School Board has revised board policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use. The passage of Senate Bill 351, Protecting Georgia's Children on Social Media Act of 2024, requires the board to review the existing policy and make any changes in accordance with the new law. Based on the state of Georgia's deadline, the administration is asking the board waive the required 30 days and approve the policy. The deadline for local boards of education to adopt a policy is October 1st, 2025. And the new policy is attached. Do you want me to read it? It's kind of long. I know, I was just making sure.
As you say, it's pretty long. Mr. Pleasant, do you want to give us a little background, maybe?
Two pages?
Yeah, yeah, a summary.
Yeah, so in summary, the state has asked for significant changes in the AUP to declare what will happen if students deviate from the AUP? What will happen if staff and faculty deviate? And what would happen if visitors, traditionally, well, I won't say visitors, we'll say non-employed adults? That might be our visitors, might be our volunteers, might be other things. And that's a category that historically was never really called out. So what we're really doing is, in accordance with law, addressing each one of those individual categories. Our AUP for student discipline really is addressed in the Progressive Student Discipline Handbook. For adults, it's in the employee handbook, and we'll have yet to come back with the actual procedures to deal with non-employees, non-student situations. But I think that this is a language that came out of GSBA, so it aligns with what the requirements are from the state.
Clarify what AUP is.
I'm sorry, yes, that's great, great. It's acceptable use policy, and it's what's supposed to dictate what we do with our devices and any of the technology resources in the district.
Are there any other questions? If not, I will turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. I will say for Ms. Sly that there are no items for the discipline committee. And then I will give it to Ms. Frey for the property committee.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. Item one on the property committee is the report from the Chattahoochee Valley Library System that we get each month. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Highest growth in summer reading participation this year, number one was Brewer Elementary, number two, Martin Luther King Elementary, and number three, Forest Road Elementary. So way to go on increasing participation in summer reading, avoiding that summer slide. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight was a, was a thank you note that the staff at the South Columbus Branch Library got from a teen who was, came into the library and was made to fit in and quote, has some quotes in here about some participation in Scrabble and other games, and just wanted the staff to know as he was moving on with his family to another state, how much you appreciate it. So making the teens feel appreciated and welcome. I mean, you guys must be doing something right over there. So thank you, way to go. Onto item number two of the property committee report, the museum. Really excited about the exhibit that's going to start at the end of the month with the, with the glass art of the diners. If you've never participated in any of the glass-blowing seminars or activities at the museum, there's another one coming up in October and November. They're really cool. I've already signed up, really excited. And the Powell's program getting restarted. But I think really having, having that international flair and hosting the students from Kyuryu, Japan was a highlight, and as we are looking at workforce development, we know those relationships and those cultural exchanges are even more important than ever. So thank you very much. If there's no questions, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Next up is the construction committee with Mr. Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to I, the budget connect stadium upgrade. It's the agenda item I, one. The destruction, the Department of Construction seeks approval of the Connect Stadium Upgrade Project Development by the approved construction manager. The project is $7,470,000 from the Capital Project Funds East Plaist. The superintendent recommends approval of the Connect Stadium Upgrade Project Development from the approved construction manager, Freeman and Associates. Any questions, ladies?
When are they going to do that construction? I mean, I know it's in use a lot right now, or is that why some of our games are at, where's that, Memorial Stadium? Oh, you still get to come back and talk about stadiums? Yes.
Can you repeat the question?
Just, when is the work expected to be done? Because I know there's a lot going on out of Connect in general.
Right. Currently, we are in the middle of our track and field upgrade, and that's what's currently going on. The, the field has been completed, the track will be completed later this week, and the striping will be done on it next week, so that'll be done at that point. The actual project for the bleachers and the concession stand will begin in November, the week after our last regular season game. That price, that project will last approximately eight months, and we should finish up somewhere late June, early July next year.
Any more questions on that one? If not, move on to the next one. Agenda item I, two, Architect for Renovation Projects. The Department of Construction seeks approval of Neil Kendust and Murray Architects Firm for the valuation, design, and overseeing of painting minor renovation projects at the following locations. Baker Middle, Blanchard Elementary, Carver High, Eddie Middle, Midland Academy, North Columbus Elementary, Waddell Elementary, and Wynton Arts Academy. The superintendent recommends Neil Kendrick Murray Architect Firm for the evaluation. Any questions? If not, ladies, gentlemen, move to agenda item I, three. The project delivery method for renovations. As part of the 2024 East Plaist, we will continue the summer painting schedule, conduct minor renovation projects. The Department of Construction seeks approval to utilize the construction manager at risk delivery method for the projects of the following locations. Baker Middle, Blanchard Elementary, Carver High, Eddie Middle, Midland Academy, North Columbus, Waddell Elementary, Wynton Arts Academy. The superintendent recommends approval, construction manager at risk at the delivery method for the summer painting schedule. Any questions, ladies? If not, we move on to agenda item I, four, the Rothschild Gym Site Application. Approve the Georgia Department of Education's new site application for Rothschild Gymnasium Project. The superintendent approves the Georgia Department of Education's new site application for the Rothschild Gymnasium Project. Any questions? If not, we move to the next agenda item, I, five. State Capital Outlay Application. Application for FY27, state entitlement funds has been submitted for 10 projects. The total estimated cost of these projects is $40,082,199. It's anticipated that $7,237,000 will be into state funding with the remaining $32 million to complete the project and local funding. Details of the project are listed in the attached documentation. The modification project will take place at Baker, Blackman Road, Blanchard Elementary, Downtown, Eddie Middle, Fort Middle, Midland Academy, North Columbus, Rothschild Middle, and Waddell Elementary. The superintendent recommends to FY27 State Capital Outlay. Any questions, ladies? You got a lot going on. The agenda, agenda item I point O six, Construction Status Report. The construction, the construction slideshow will be presented by Mr. Ward Odom. Ward?
Thank you. Good afternoon. So our construction status for September is going to be a little short. Most of our projects have come to completion. We will be getting back on them early winter, spring, and then the summer will get back up heavy. But to show everybody where we're at currently, this is the Connect Stadium Field and Track Project that Mr. Bowles just discussed. That was the beginning phases of that on the left-hand side, and we're at the completion of the field. You see the track. He was talking about just needing striping, so that's what it looks like, the D's on at the end. Looked very good, so we're just waiting to strip it next week, and that part will be complete. And we have some, a few additional projects that are coming up, the Blackman Road Middle School HVAC, Coolin Tower, the Double Churches Elementary Upgrade, and the Connect Stadium Upgrade, which we also just looked at the GMP. Will be coming up in the very near future. And as always, we thank the citizens for passing the East Plaist, so all these projects can be completed.
If no more questions, the last one on my agenda is, is architectural firm name change. Delivered as information to the school board. Heck Burchard Architects Incorporated plans to enter into a partnership with McMullin Pazden Smith Architects, Architectural PC. As part of the partnership for the legal entity purposes, Heck Burchard will be part of McMullin Pazden Smith Architects. To align with the new legal entity, Heck Burchard contracts associated with current projects will be aligned to McMullin Pazden Smith Architects. Any questions, ladies, or? What's the new name, you said? McMullin Pazden Smith Architects PC. That's what I'm reading. Is that the new name? That is the new name.
Oh, so goodbye to Heck Burchard. They've been a staple for a long time, but yes.
In the last few weeks, I've, I've joined the ranks of parenthood because I've got a grandson now at Eagle Ridge. And so my wife received her first ticket this week. She says, I didn't do that. Then it's like, huh, I might have done that. But, and then also picking up my son up the school bus, Eagle Ridge looks very... But uh, and then also picking up my son up the school bus, Eagle Ridge looks very nice. Uh, and getting down to Connect Stadium, I go by there every morning now, circling around to, to pick up Bobby and, and I tell you, everything is, is looking very good as far as Eagle Ridge and, and uh, Connect Stadium over there. It just uh, you know, when you, when you're on the board is one thing, but when you're on the board with uh, he's my grandson, but he's more like my son to me. When you're picking him up and everything, it's a difference right there. You get to see what the thing. In fact, earlier this week, he got off his first school bus in his life and that was one of them moments, how is Bobby going to do off the school bus? And he came down and he enjoyed it, but just sharing you a little bit of my life, folks, but Ward letting you know that your hard work over at the Connect Stadium and Eagle Ridge, the principal, everybody, it looks very good. And that's just a hands-on looking at everything going on. It really, it really works as a champ, all them buses and all going through. It's, it's amazing how that many cars and buses can go in and everybody's got their stuff down together. And I just want to share that, but Madam Chair, that's, that's all for the Construction Committee.
Okay, and I will cover the Finance Committee. So, item one under the Finance Committee are the Financial Statements. Do we have any questions? Item two under the Finance Committee is the, I haven't done this in a while, the board, the budget adjustments. Um, there are a number of those involved with Title Four, Title Two and Title One. Um, budget adjustments of $25,000 or more. Does anybody have any questions? I was curious about the B, the $1,236,000, the additional allocation of budgeted funds for Division of Teaching and Learning. So is that additional money that's kind, I get a little confused about the budget adjustments?
Chris Drom, Director of Federal Programs, yes, that's actually an increase. The previous budget was based on a projection and the uncertainties surrounding Title Two Funds at the time, we weren't quite sure about. Uh, once allocations came out, it was back to, it was back up to basically where it was at last year. Yes.
Any more questions for the budget adjustments? Number, number three are the competitively bid purchases. We have a grease trap in the school nutrition program equipment. I usually don't have any questions on those. Um, anybody else have any questions? Item four is purchase exception A and B instructional materials. There are several listed. Um, if anyone has any questions? Sorry. The way we see this differently, we have to kind of click real quick, but I looked at those last night. I think we're good. Item five, purchase exception C, Maintenance. That is the GPS activation fee for Zonar Systems for our buses. That's important. Any questions? Item six, purchase exception E, Additional Purchases. This relates to the Raptor Technologies Volunteer Screening. So an additional almost $40,000 for background for our volunteers. Okay? Any other questions? Item seven, purchase exception F, Invitation to Bid. We have custodial services, gym floor at Eagle Ridge Academy, solar wind network system and end user device purchasing. With the Custodial Services Contract, is this anything different than our budget? Or is this kind of just putting the RFPs out there? So the overall amount?
Uh, that aligns with our budget, line item for custodial services.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Item eight, Exception G, Professional Services. We have Grant Evaluator Services, therapeutic services at Woodall, social work services for Woodall, therapeutic counseling for Woodall, or at Woodall Coordinator Services, Woodall, psychological services, Just Breathe North Columbus, coaching services at Carver High School. Uh, okay, that's good to know. This Works Program and Southern Regional Educational Services. Do we have any questions? And then item nine, Soul Source and Volatile Purchases. Again, our fuel purchases and copy paper, things that are definitely needed. Any questions? And then we have item 10, our donations for which we are always grateful for the support of our community, um, to our schools. We couldn't do it without them. And again, thank you for that. Um, item K is informational. Is that you then? Okay, just for us to see. Okay. Some information on the Girl Scouts of Historic Columbus. Have I missed anything or do I get credit for a really fast meeting?
Good job.
I can't really take credit for it, but I'm glad it was. Okay, Dr. Lewis?
Thank you. Again, it was mentioned earlier, but I do want to thank um, all of our DTL staff, uh, Dr. Smith, uh, Ben Travers, Virginia McCullough and all the people who coordinate, as well as our host families who hosted our students from Kieryu Japan, our sister city. It was a great event. Uh, I think they're about a great time. The kids really enjoy themselves and it's just amazing how quickly the kids bond with their families in a relatively short period of time. And I just want to again, thank everyone for opening their homes and their hearts to our students who are here visiting. And it's our hope that in the near future, we will be returning the favor by sending a delegation of students over to spend some time in Kieryu. Okay, very good. Noted, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Bye, Chair.
Thank you. With that, our meeting is adjourned and we will see y'all next Monday night for the voting meeting. Thank you.